At this time, we'll call to regular meeting in New Ulm City Council for Tuesday, February fourth, two thousand twenty at four thirty P M. The order. First item on the agenda is your consent agenda items, what you wishes.
Mister President, I'll offer a motion to approve those items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on any? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Both no, motion carries. We're gonna, at this time, we're gonna skip ahead, we have one gentleman here from the B and L bar, and so he doesn't have to sit through, because it could be a lengthy meeting. We'll jump to item six point two, and it's the Buck Fest closure for B and L bar for, let's see, what day we got here? March sixth, two thousand twenty, eight to twelve.
I'll offer the motion for this.
Second.
Oh, it's a resolution, excuse me, I'll offer the resolution.
Second.
Do a second.
You wanna do that, you wanna do with, with conditions?
Oh, with, yeah, with the conditions, I was, yeah, I was gonna make a comment about that, but.
Yeah, by seconded.
Any more?
Yeah, just, there's some little bit difference in from our last previous year, I noticed that there's an ice bar now. My understanding, there'll still be access for folks that wanna walk through the alley. So a few changes, but nothing major.
Do you have anything on it, Roger?
Uh, the only condition I would like the council to consider is, as written, uh, the first one would be that the bar would place a traffic barrier on each end of the alley, and traditionally, that's just been a no parking buck. Um, that really doesn't do anything to impede people coming out of the bar with their drinks and going into the alley and vice versa. The bar's got a side door that would go into the alley. I would ask that a condition be that the, both ends of the alley truly be closed, and that the bar be responsible for making sure that no patrons leave their premises, the bar or the alley, with a drink.
Okay. We got an out on that, so. Any other questions, concerns?
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
So, um, realistically, I think, excuse me, I, I think the, um, the traffic barrier would be fine, because they are planning to have security at the event, and if they place security at the barricades to not allow that, um, I think that should suffice, um, you know, and we'll have, you know, enforcement will be in that area, so if uh, an issue does arise, um, then I think at that point, we can take action moving forward for subsequent events and subsequent, um, you know, requests like this, to actually have them close off when they're looking at events like that, um, you know. Uh, I think it'll be a minor, minor expense, and they, and then, like I said, they will have security to make sure people don't wander out where they're supposed to be.
Mister President, um, they, there was a situation this summer, when the street dance was held, where there were also representations about security being provided, uh, which were not effective. There was at least one situation where a patron, uh, definitely had a drink outside of the licensed premises. So, um, I'm hoping that nothing like that will reoccur. I think this would just be a way of ensuring that there's some additional security in the event that, um, the se- the security people are busy, or something else happens, uh, because that parking buck just doesn't really impede anyone, so.
Any comments, Rick, on that? Do you have any problems? Step up to the mic, please. Just state your name and address for the record.
Rick Combs, Six Ridge View Drive, New Ulm, Minnesota. I just wanna understand, then you want me to put a gate all the way across the alley, so nobody can walk through the alley then, right?
That would be, I think that would be the appropriate way of restricting the licensed premises.
Okay.
Right, whether it would be something like a cattle gate that people aren't gonna be moving, or a fence, or I think in the past, um, I think the chamber has used that orange netting that you can get, just so it's clear.
I was gonna come six feet out to the bar, and then I'll just put with the, an L shape, 'cause I had talked to Mister Michael about coming six feet off my alley, off the bar, across into the alley, so I'd be six feet off from my building into the alley with the ice, and then I'll put a gate across that part, so nobody can walk out with security. Is that what you?
I mean, this would all be with inside the alley?
Yes.
Yeah, that, what's, what you do inside there, that, that doesn't matter.
Yep.
It's just a matter of securing both ends of the alley.
Okay.
Sounds good. Anybody else have any questions, concerns? Seeing none, we have a, offered a resolution, waived reading, no more discussion, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, Rick. We'll go back to item two, uh, annual appointments, appointments of the city council.
I'll offer the motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? It's for the airport commission for Ted Banel?
Banel?
Banel? How would you pronounce it, Dave?
Banel.
Banel, okay.
You're guessing. No.
No more discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 Both no, motion carries. Item three, fireworks license, and that's for oh, what do you call it, Hilton Drive, Florence, Alabama, T T, TNT fireworks. And that's for June nineteenth, two thousand twenty, to July sixth, two thousand twenty.
They are on the ball getting this appro- approved real early, so I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Both no, motion carries. Uh, item four point one, variance request from Al Peller.
Good evening, um, the property, um, the property for this application is currently described as lots one through seven, block two, Milford Heights, second addition. Um, it's currently in the replating process, and the proposed new plot will be lots one through four, block two, Milford Heights, third addition. The whole purpose of the replat is to accommodate twin homes on this property. The current, uh, land use designation for this area is medium density residential, and its, uh, zoning designation is R three, uh, multiple family residence district. City code, uh, for this zoning district requires that, uh, there is a ten-foot side yard setback, uh, from the property line. And as you all know, when a twin home is constructed, uh, uh, each individual home is on its own property, but there is a common party wall, and that common party wall is typically right on the property line. Therefore, uh, they're requesting a, a zero-foot variance, uh, for that, uh, construction of that twin home, twin homes. Uh, staff would recommend approval, um, of this variance for the following reasons. Uh, the applicant was given a side yard setback variance in twenty seventeen, uh, to permit the construction of townhomes on this exact same property. There are already twin homes located directly, uh, to the west, and the construction of twin homes on the east side of Warshoe Avenue would maintain the same development, uh, in this neighborhood. Um, the city has granted similar variances in the past for twin homeland uses. This variance would allow lower density, uh, housing on the property. And twin homes are an established form of residential housing, and this type of construction, uh, necessitates, uh, a common party wall. There are six recommended conditions, and I would like to read, uh, through those conditions for this variance request. The first one is that all structures on the property shall comply with a lot area requirements in the R two zoning district regulations. Uh, except for setbacks along the side property line, all structures shall comply with all the, all other setback requirements as provided in chapter nine of the city code. Separate utility services shall be furnished and provided to each dwelling unit. Um, there should be a common party firewall, uh, up to new construction standards found in the Minnesota State Building Code. The applicant will record all, record all required agreements, easements, and deed restrictions on the structure that abut the zero lot line. Uh, the property and structures will comply with all other, excuse me, relevant zoning district regulations. I wanted to read those, because all those conditions coincide with the proposed zoning amendment that will be coming up in just a couple of items, uh, down the agenda.
Thank you, John. Any questions?
I'm just gonna add that the planning commission met on January twenty seventh, two thousand twenty, and recommended, uh, recommendation to go forward with this.
I'd be, just a comment, I'm really happy to approve this one, because after fifteen years of these coming in front of council, or twenty years, if we approve the amendment coming down to the, uh, zoning ordinance, it's the last one we'll see. Motion to approve.
Second.
Tell me how you really feel about that.
We have a motion and a second?
Yep.
Okay. Any more discussion?
I did.
Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Both no, motion carries. Item four point two, conditional use permit for Tim Ricky.
All right, the applicant, uh, for this conditional use permit is Tim Ricky, Ricky, and the property owner is Tim Ricky, Real Estate Holdings, LLC. This property is legally described as lot one, block one oh four, north of Center Street, um, and is located directly behind us across Broadway. Its zoning designation is the B two, uh, service business district. And currently, the second floor of the building is used, uh, for two apartments. The first floor of the building is used for business purposes. And then, the north addition of the building facing New Ulm Tire is currently vacant. Notice was provided, uh, to all property owners within three hundred fifty feet, uh, of this property, and to date, uh, staff, uh, has not received any comments back on this application. The property owner is proposing to construct a one, one-room, five hundred twenty foot, square foot, loft-style apartment on the north part of the existing building, so that vacant part of the existing building. Uh, the south and east part of the building will remain, uh, open for business purposes, and is, uh, one thousand eighty-two square feet in size. The city council at its December seventeenth, twenty nineteen, meeting, approved amending the city code to allow apartments on the first floor of the building in the B two zoning district through a conditional use permit process. Uh, this would be the first application, um, re- uh, pertaining to that zoning amendment. Uh, staff would recommend approval of the request, since it does comply with the city, uh, code requirements. Um, and in your packets, you can see that there are a number of items listed in bold under the staff recommendation. I'm gonna read through those, because those bolded items will also serve as the conditions on this conditional use permit application. So, number one, this is an appropriate use, um, uh, at this location. Next is the, uh, one point five off-street parking stalls are provided per dwelling unit. The request does comply with this condition, um, all of the parking stalls will be, will be provided on that site, um, and you can see that in attachment five. Parking stalls are to, are to be provided on-site, or the owner of the property on which there is a dwelling unit must provide the city proof and security of said parking stalls, excuse me, at the time of the issuance of the C U P annually in January first of each year. Now, he's providing all his parking stalls on-site, so that requirement wouldn't apply to him at this time. Um, the minimum floor area for a business shall be no less than sixty percent of the total main floor area, and there should be no less than eight hundred fifty square feet in size. Um, as I stated earlier, the business, uh, area of this, um, first floor will, uh, be one thousand eighty-two square feet, and is approximately seventy percent of the main floor area. Minimum dwelling unit size shall be no less than four hundred square feet for an efficiency apartment, and no less than five hundred twenty square feet for a one-bedroom apartment. And, uh, the proposed floor area for this apartment is five hundred twenty square feet, and that's thirty percent of the first floor area. And then lastly, the last condition would be that the residential component of the structure shall not be facing the front of the building. And as the applicant's proposing, the residential area of this building would face New Ulm Tire, so the side of the building, and, um, the exterior walls for the unit would be on both the side and then the rear of that building. Last condition would be that the applicant pay the cost to record the permit with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Uh, Mister Ricky is here, if anybody has any questions for him.
Anybody have any questions?
Just gonna add, at the January thirtieth, um, uh, planning and zoning meeting, recommended, uh, moving forward with this application. Uh, we had no response from the neighboring parties, or anybody objecting to it at the meeting. And it's a challenging property, I feel, and it's a unique situation, and try to get it renovated and.
I do know that this property obviously was downtown, and I think I would vote no, and probably the rest of you as well. Or again, losing another retail business option in our, in our downtown. It is a challenging area, parking, I understand that, but every time we, we remove a retail option from downtown, we remove a retail option from downtown.
Yeah.
And I, that makes me nervous, but I also understand that, um, they've tried to advertise for, to fill that spot, from what I read in the information, and hasn't really worked very well, and, and because it is a kind of a unique property and location, I'll vote for it, but I just get concerned that we keep taking away retail options, we, we lose them.
Any other concerns? Seeing none, entertain a motion, offer a resolution? I don't think we had one, do we?
I'll offer the resolution, waiving the reading, approving the six conditions of the application by Tim Ricky, requesting the conditional use permit to allow the location of residential dwelling on the first floor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, offer a resolution, waive reading, any more discussion? Seeing none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item four point three, amend section nine point fourteen, general regulations of the city code. Mister Schnoberg.
Dave Schnoberg, community development director. Uh, planning commission conducted a public hearing on this matter at their January thirtieth meeting, and they unanimously recommended approval. This is the, um, action that they took with regards to forwarding the ordinance to you for consideration. There's a later item in the agenda where we have the first consideration of the, um, of the ordinance. Planning commission also discussed this matter at their December nineteenth meeting. The purpose of the amendment is to avoid having people request variances for twin home and townhome types of development in our R two and our R three, um, zoning districts. The amendment addresses kind of two major issues that we currently, um, deal with. One is, we have setbacks for sidewall areas, and when you have a common sidewall, that requires a variance. If we want that type of development, it, we shouldn't really require a variance. So, that's one item that we're trying to address. The second thing that we're trying to address is that frequently with townhome projects, you will have smaller lots within a larger community or association-owned lot. And yet, we end up having to measure setbacks and lot area and lot width, you know, for those smaller lots. And what we're saying is, let's measure from the boundary of those association or larger community lots. So those are kind of the two main things that we, um, that we wanted to look at. Um, we had a townhome project, um, a number of years ago, where we had eight variances that they had to request. So, we're hoping to reduce that number, if not eliminate, uh, that need entirely. Um, as you know, housing trends, um, are, have been changing, and twin homes and townhomes are more and more an accepted form of development, so we're trying to bring our ordinance, uh, up to date in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anybody have any questions? Thanks, Dave. Seeing none, entertain a motion?
I'll offer the motion approving the recommendation of planning commission to allow zero lot line standards in the R two single and two-family residence, and R three multi-family resident, resident zoning districts.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Both no, motion carries. Item five point one, performance measurement citizen survey, two thousand nineteen questionnaire.
Council president, counselors, um, this was brought before you, uh, at the last meeting to approve doing the survey again. Um, this is just showing you what the survey is, and I will point out, the only difference, um, from the, uh, previous year prior um, is we did break out, um, the parks and rec question into the quality of city recreational programs, and the quality of city recreational facilities. And I wasn't sure if there was any other questions that, uh, you as a council might wanna add, or if this is okay, then we'll, we'll move forward with this and get this out.
Yeah, I read through it, I, I liked your, uh, the few changes, so it's good with me.
Anybody else have any questions, concerns?
I think it's good.
I'm final it.
So you don't need action on this one, it looks like, right?
I just need you to approve the performance survey, so we can send it out.
I thought we did that already last time.
Uh, you authorized us to send the survey out, but didn't actually approve the actual questions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Both no, motion carries. Item five point two, renew recreation center. Mister Schmitz.
Tom Schmitz, parking recreation director, President Schmitz and counselors. You have before you a proposed action, uh, to approve design option one, uh, that's been prepared by our consultants, and to, um, authorize the construction budget to change uh, to eleven point five million dollars, and to authorize the competitive bidding process to begin immediately upon completion of construction documents. The renew oversight committee unanimously recommended this action on their January twenty ninth meeting last week. So, with that said, um, I've got a PowerPoint presentation to go through here. Um, and with a little more background information, uh, you, the city council and the legislature has, have authorized us up to fourteen point eight million dollars in sales tax bonds. Cost estimates for the seven original projects were prepared back in twenty fifteen and twenty sixteen. Uh, construction costs have significantly increased since then. And you have previously canceled the dome project, uh, estimated at three point five million dollars, in order for those funds to be, uh, earmarked elsewhere, um, among the other six remaining renewed projects. So we are here today to talk about, uh, probably the most significant of the renewed projects, and that's, of course, changes to the recreation center campus, which encompasses four projects, aquatic improvements, an indoor playground, a regional gymnastics center, and a co-located wellness fitness center. Through the, uh, work with the design team consultants, um, we have determined that, um, the construction budget needs to be changed from nine point five million up to eleven point five million, in order to deliver all four of these elements in a high-quality manner that will meet the user needs. Uh, we do have two options for you to consider this evening. Uh, the first option, option number one, has been significantly value engineered down to the approximately eleven point five estimate for construction costs. Um, it still has the, uh, um, significant aquatic improvements with a six-lane lap pool, and a significant leisure pool for walkers and learn-to-swimmers, swim lessons and so on, along with a spa and, uh, water slides, and of course, a deep well for a rock climbing wall. And the potential for a ninja cross course, uh, above the lap pool, which would be the first one in Minnesota. Um, it also includes turning the ju- existing swimming pool into the gymnastics center of about approximately eleven thousand square feet, in which the gymnastics organization, um, T G A, Turner Gymnastics Academy, um, is very happy with, and, uh, looking forward to, uh, consummating that lease, uh, if you approve option one, uh, to proceed with today. It also has the co-located fitness area, which is the existing Herbeck multipurpose room to be bumped out a little and brought strength and cardio together in the same open floor plan workspace. It also brings in the playground, um, with glass, um, basically in the aquatic center shell, um, and a dedicated multipurpose room, uh, for birthday parties related to aquatics or, uh, playground or other uses, uh, by anyone. It relocates the existing Herbeck multipurpose room into the existing women's locker room space i- in the building. It changes the locker rooms, uh, from two locker rooms to three, with approximately the square footage, including a family locker room for, uh, families to use, separately from a men's locker room, and separately from a women's locker room. It also turns the existing welcome desk into a dedicated cycling center, so we don't have to move by, uh, the, the spin bikes, the cycling bikes in and out of the Herbeck room multiple times a day for classes and so on. And it moves the, uh, the main entrance to where the administrative suite is now, and relocates five administrative staff members into the existing strength center, uh, placing us in basically hundred-square-foot offices. So we're going from large offices to, uh, to small offices with the project. So those are the major elements and components, along with the, um, addition of parking space outside. Here's the overhead view of the latest rendering. You know, to the left, the new addition box, the aquatic center and playground. And then the windows, uh, kind of to the right, would be the new co-located, uh, wellness fitness center with strength and cardio fitness taking place. And then, the windows kind of to the right would be the new co-located wellness fitness center with strength and cardio fitness taking place. Another rendering of the entrance area. Okay, another aspect of the project that we've been working significantly with consultants, including our construction management team, is thinking construction in a single phase versus multi-phase. A single-phase construction would narrow the timeframe, would require less months of actual construction if we close the south portion of the campus down and allow all construction activities to commence at once, rather than being phased or staged. That estimate is approximately three hundred thousand dollars in savings if it's, if the construction schedule is reduced by three months. Okay? Also, there are decreased expenses from not operating some of those components that will be closed during the construction, including the pool. The only spaces in the building that will be unavailable during construction are the pool, the locker rooms and the showers. The rest of activities are planned to be available at the Recreation Center or elsewhere in our facilities and system. Some of the full-time staff assigned to the Recreation Center may be reassigned to other facilities in our system during the construction time period. There will be a reduction in expense with some part-time staff being laid off or decommissioned during the construction timeframe. So, the pool will be closed during the construction phase. There are a number of different indoor and outdoor pools available within our area, as depicted on this slide. Memberships, we've got a lot of different kinds of memberships, annual memberships, three-month memberships, punch card memberships, daily admissions and of course, the senior reimbursement and health insurance reimbursement customers. We would plan to extend memberships by fifty percent and/or refund memberships at no additional cost to customers when we're closed. There will be some decreased revenue during the closed construction time period and we are certain that the loss of revenue during construction will be more than recouped with the new facilities and new amenities over the following years after we reopen. Operational impact, you can see on this slide, we've got column of the difference in square foot of the spaces, the percent change in square foot of the spaces and then whether or not the revenue generating. And so, the indoor pool, it's going to be approximately twenty-one percent larger. We'll have new amenities and we anticipate an increased revenue coming from those new amenities, including zero depth entry and, you know, play features and so on. The playground, there's not a region, there's not a playground within our region, an indoor year-round playground. So, we anticipate significant revenue increases from daily admissions or memberships and/or the parties that we anticipate selling or renting to birthday parties and groups. The wellness fitness center, co-locating strength and cardio together will be more efficient and effective and not be costly. We anticipate adding approximately ten to twelve new machines, strength or cardio machines into the co-located fitness space. The Herbeck room, no change as far as revenue generation. You know, we're still going to have a Herbeck room for fitness classes and/or meetings. Those are, and then, of course, the new multi-purpose room adjacent to the playground or the new multi-purpose room, yeah, adjacent to the playground and the aquatic center will be a revenue generator also and that is a new space for the facility. The administrative suite, as I mentioned, is being cut by almost fifty percent, over forty percent to reduce overhead costs and the locker rooms will have a slight reduction in maintenance and overhead there. Additional operational impact is that we're adding on to an existing building with existing staff, especially competent expert staff that are familiar with the amenities that we're adding. Okay, we already have certified pool operators, we already have fitness instructors. And so, I would not support or be very less supportive of a new facility, a fourth building for park and rec. This is in addition to an existing building in which we have existing staff. And as the third and final bullet on this slide denotes, management is planning to operate the additional square footage without additional staff expense or staff members. Okay, moving on, additional revenue opportunities. I think I've touched on this briefly, but the new pool will have new amenities, new admissions, new members, the indoor playground will bring in more users, additional dedicated multi-purpose party room, the dedicated cycling center, so we don't have to move the bikes around and the plan to go twenty-four seven with fitness in the fitness wellness center and possibly including the field house into the twenty-four seven access. The gymnastics center, regional gymnastics center, we don't have such a thing in the New Ulm area or region in which you've got eleven thousand square feet to host significant events, tournaments and so on. And those families that come for practice, meets or tournaments are going to want to do stuff at the rec center when their gymnast is not performing gymnastics during the meet in the gymnastics center. So, that will bring in increased people to the facility. Okay, the option two, which staff has, is presenting as unviable, has a significant reduction in pool size, including the reduction from six lanes down to three lanes, a significant reduction in learn to swim area and walking areas and a reduction in the deep well. Also, a reduction in the number of slides. If we have to go to option two, the gymnastics center will be reduced, at least a thousand square feet in lost floor space and the loss of the toddler multi-purpose office space with a potential possible impact with the Turner Gymnastics Academy agreement. Finally, the playground wellness, we'd be placing the playground in one or two of the racquetball courts. So, we'd be losing one or two of the racquetball courts and the multi-purpose room would be in further, the southern portion of the campus. So, the multi-purpose room would be inefficient and ineffective in relationship to the playground. We'd have to reconfigure the fitness wellness space for reductions. Okay, so, there is a potential floor plan for option two with an estimated price tag of just under ten million dollars. So, we have an opportunity that comes around, city councilors, once a generation, once every twenty years. We're fortunate to have our local option sales tax possibly be renewed by council action, voter support and legislative action. So, these positive additional quality of life amenities will impact economically and quality of life for our community and region for fifty-plus years. The bottom line is to opt for option one rather than option two or take additional time, which means money, to retool and redesign an option two that may possibly meet our needs. Here is the big picture of finances. You have there the column of where we were five years ago in twenty fifteen and where we were last year in twenty nineteen with the authorization of nine point five million dollars for construction and where we are today with the request to bump that nine point five up to eleven point five million dollars for construction. We've got the Johnson Park up here, which we had earmarked one point four million. We've got one point three five in the spreadsheet now and we actually anticipate that to be closer to one point three three oh. Let's see here, Herman Heights Park, we know, we won't know that until bid opening this month on Tuesday, February twenty-eight. So, that action may be come to you at the first meeting in March. We do have a hundred thousand dollars of renew funds earmarked for the second project at Herman Heights Park and that's the retaining wall project. So, the grand total is just under sixteen million. We know we've got approval of fourteen point eight total in sales tax bonds. The Finance Director has determined that we have bond premiums and interest earnings of over a half a million dollars projected. Some is existing and some is projected, so that there's available funds of fifteen point three five million, leaving a potential shortfall of just over six hundred thousand dollars. Okay? So, there's that slide, potential funding options. We know, we've already got the sales tax interest and premiums in there. The general fund balance, we have talked with our bond council and the bond council has said that a million dollar spend down out of our fund balance, the general fund balance will not affect our bond rating. And the EDA has committed potentially up to a quarter million dollars of the project. Of course, we'll know more about Herman Heights at bid opening in a couple of weeks. Historical information, the city council has authorized expenditures out of the fund balance in the past for the Minnesota National Guard, including their new armory and field maintenance shop with the land acquisition of over a million dollars. Also, a million dollars approximately spent on the Minnesota River levy a few years ago out of the fund balance. And if we remember back to renew one, the original sales tax in two thousand, the city council did dip into fund balance in the early two thousands to complete those three big projects, including the civic center, with additional non-sales tax bond funding. The bottom portion of this slide shows additional expenses we put into the civic center that weren't included in the original civic center project with non-sales tax funds, general fund balance. So, that is the slide presentation. And the request this evening is to adjust the construction budget from nine point five million to eleven point five million.
Thank you, Tom. Anybody have any questions? I think it's a great presentation, appreciate all the work you put into and everything.
Very good, very thorough.
Thank you.
I just, I'm going to be upfront, I will support it. I think we have to go ahead. I don't think we're going to have any idea where we're at until we go out for bids. And we have no choice but to go that route, I believe, because without, we don't know. We've been wrong in the past and hopefully, it'll come in better than we think. And if it comes in higher than that, we're going to be back to square one here. But I don't think we can prolong this because if we prolong it, we're going to see the bids come in higher yet. So, we have to go out to bid this winter. We can't go out to bid come May, June, it just, then we just will put it off another year and then the costs are going to go up for sure. So, I guess I favor going ahead with option one, but against all my preaching in the beginning when I said.
Well, we can preach, but we still need to talk about where we're going to come up with over a million dollars.
I think, I don't think we're that far off, really.
I mean, we have some options, I mean.
Yeah. So, based on the projections, really, the shortfall is about six hundred thousand. And so, taking that out, if we do just do fund balance at that point, we'll still be right at the fifty percent mark or right above it as still having fund balance reserves.
Question I have for Mr. Dalton, the Finance Director, does that include last year's carryovers or not, or aren't we that far yet this year?
I can't come up with what twenty nineteen's final numbers are at this point, there's too many unknowns. We're working towards it, it looks promising, we should be adding to fund balance at this point. I don't know how much, a couple hundred thousand maybe, so our fund balance is going to grow. I know it will grow a little bit coming out of twenty nineteen, I just don't know how much.
I'm going to chime in where President Schmitz left off. I mean, I'm also going to support the project, this is a once in a twenty, thirty-year project. I've actually been down to that rec center more in my lifetime in the last three months than I ever have, just to see who's using the facility. I mean, it, from the three-year-old to the senior citizen, it's used heavily every day. I want to do thank the renew committee to let the general public know, they did go through it and take the meat and potatoes out of it and we're still at this number. I mean, we did cut down on the beautiful designed building, it's now tip-up panels, we took away the arch. All those costs have been eliminated, so people do understand that. And I know other councilors, did we see some flack that we're going to probably have to shut the facility down? In my mind, I mean, I've been in construction my whole life, the building official, what that would cost us to keep that pool operating and just imagine yourself being cattle-shooted through cattle chutes built, and I mean cattle chutes, scaffolding, poly directing you in certain lanes to get to the swimming pool. At one point, I'll guarantee, men and women, you're going to be sharing locker rooms. You're not going to like it, this is the route we have to go. I mean, that's what, well, but that's what happens with this type of construction, so we have no choice but let's shut it down, get the project done, get it back open and move forward.
Can I add something?
Stand, name. Name and address, just for the record.
Excuse me, Tom. My name is Russ Brown, I'm a retired citizen of New Ulm. Many have said, why do you care? I care because it's New Ulm, I like New Ulm. I'm in favor of the facility, all the way, except, why are we digging up an existing pool that's working great to put in gymnastics? I'm not against gymnastics, but I don't think you need to tear up an existing pool that's functioning fine to do that. The next option is the locker rooms. I don't know, I know many of you do not use the locker rooms here. The locker rooms at times are very, very busy. And I will tell you, I for one, would not want to stand in line waiting for a family to finish dressing fifteen minutes? So, I could go into the pool along with fifteen or twenty other people that are standing in line. It doesn't make sense. The other thing is, the proposal is to take the locker rooms and change the bench sizes. They're going to take out the benches that are there now and give us one, now they raised it to two benches. The two benches are two feet across. You sit down on that bench half-dressed and let me come over there soaking wet and sit down beside you in a six-foot long bench that's two feet deep. It isn't going to work. So, rather than do it partially, rather than hurry into this project and get it done and be sorry we didn't do it right to begin with, maybe we need to just look at it again. The public has seen very little of this. There was a quick little ad in the paper that we're going to have opening on Thursday night and Friday morning. A lot of people were totally unaware of it, a lot of people never saw the prints. It's just, you have to look at all the citizens of New Ulm, look at what it's going to be used, how it's going to be used. And back to the locker rooms, I agree with you, Tom, we really need it, we need the facility, we need to bring in more people. And if we have that facility, we would bring in more people. But where in the heck would they take a bath or a shower? Where would they sit when they're all soaking wet to put on their shoes? You understand, and lean against the wall and slip and fall? I don't think it's smart. Now, I'm not a building contractor, I don't know all the construction. Closing the pool, if we have to dig it up, if we have to do all those things, I guess I can understand it. I don't like it, but I guess I can understand it. But I really, really do not understand why we have to tear up that existing pool. There's several, I don't know, I, we're going to add, we're going to build a whole new pool, why can't we put the gymnastics equipment over there? How much money would we save not digging up the pool? How much money would we save by putting the gymnastics over against the, and the, the glass wall? I'm glad you've narrowed that down, brought it down a bunch. Glass walls are very expensive to heat, number one. Number two, the humidity from that pool is going to cause that thing to be dripping and dirty all the time. I, I think some of these plans need to be rethought. I really hope we do it right. If we're going to do it, I don't care what we're spending, do it right. You don't do something half and then regret it for the next ten years or twenty or fifty. The pool we have now is what, fifty years old? And there's nothing wrong with it. It's held up real good, people love it, it works. The locker rooms we have now are fifty years old. They were designed right, put in right and it was done right. and it was done right. I will stop, I just want you to really seriously consider what you're doing tonight. I don't, like I said, I don't mind spending the money, if it's done right, but I don't want to see a locker room that's gonna fit twenty people, or maybe ten. And what are you gonna do when you get a bunch of kids in there? The comment was, well, we'll put up hooks to hang up clothes on. You gonna hang your clean clothes up on the wall and come back from the pool and find them laying on the floor in the wet? I wouldn't like it. I think we need to reconsider, so I'll back off. Thank you, Tom, for all you've done, I do appreciate what you're trying to do, but I just don't like the way you're doing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'm gonna take a stab at a couple of those, from the information we were given, am I correct? We only lost one hundred sixty-seven square feet of locker room space?
Correct.
So is it a little misconceiving to you, looking at the blueprint from what's down there now, the locker rooms have only?
The benches will we have?
The women's locker room will have three sitting areas and the men's locker room will have two sitting areas.
Like I said, would you guys wanna be standing there all wet or dry? Right now, there's uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, at least six, there might be eight benches, and each one of them are over six feet long. And I think the, the drawings show that it's uh, we're losing one-third of the space. What I'm concerned about is the space to sit down, put your boots on, your shoes on. I'm also concerned about locker space. Right now, uh, the lockers are one foot wide, two feet, two and a half deep, I believe, and uh, three feet tall. The new plan is for, what are they now, one foot by two foot?
Uh, the exact lockers have not been determined yet, but uh, the existing ones are three square feet and we will be looking at um, three square feet and two square feet options.
And how many would we lose? How many lockers do we lose?
I don't have that information on the top of my head, but uh, through the design work, um, with staff and consultants, uh, we have determined that this is a very appropriate code-compliant setup for a modern, contemporary, um, e- efficient aquatic center.
The architect also told us that, that when they designed the one for the college in the cities, they found that the people didn't use the showers, college kids. We use the showers here. Most of us shower before we go into pool, and then we shower when we come out. And to cut the locker room size down, you go in in the winter times with a pair of wet boots, a coat, a cap maybe, your towel, your clean clothes, shove them into a one-foot by two-foot area. And try and keep them clean and dry, it isn't gonna happen. So we get three feet, alright? We're gonna have, we're cutting the space down by a third, so we're gonna have two-thirds of space, to my way of thinking, that's two-thirds of lockers. And if we cut those lockers down, they're not gonna work. I, go down yourselves, go down tomorrow, carry your coat in, your winter coat, wind in your boots, you want clean shoes when you're walking on the floor, so leave your dirty shoes, your, your uh, boots, your clean clothes in that locker and see how much you can put in it. There's a lot of coats that are very big, so, I'm sorry, I'll, I've said my piece, I really appreciate, I appreciate your guys' time, I appreciate your really looking.
Tom, I, yeah, do it, Mike. Tom, I can, my um, understanding is the design and the architect um, discussion about the pool and the gymnastics center had to do with future staffing issues and also the need for the gymnastics, at least the end area to be a deep area, um, so they could perform certain type of gymnastics, am I correct on that?
Yes.
So, can you expand on that a little bit, more than what I just said?
Well, a couple of aspects is that our swimming pool is forty to fifty years old and swimming pool, indoor swimming pools do not last forever. And so through the design process, it was recommended that we bring in a new code-compliant, ADA accessible compliant, energy-efficient aquatic center. And the existing indoor pool will be a perfect space for one of the four other uses, the gymnastics users. And we have designed the gymnastics space to be um, very cost-effective from a construction standpoint, so that their pits, their gymnastic pits are in the deep, existing deep end of the pool now. So it's a very uh, well-thought-out and well-designed proposal, given the fact that we have limited and finite funding. If we had significantly more funding, we could have more showers and a bigger aquatic center and so on.
One other comment, Tom, maybe you wanna touch on is with this swimming pool issue, and I realize forty to fifty years old, all of our chlorine system piping, but in the event they'd have chose to keep that pool, still had to add on the piping chlorine system what, what, for the indoor water park, would have actually cost us more money. Remember, we also have the water park, that would've cost us more money, now we're doubling up everything. I believe that's one of the.
Correct, and our existing pool is not really um, wonderfully excessive, I, I mean accessible, it, it doesn't have a zero-depth entry, which is.
Somebody in a wheelchair can access our pool.
Yeah, which the, uh, those with mobility impairments really need a zero-depth entry, along with small people, children. So there would be significant change to have to ma- uh, be, be made to our existing pool. And from a cost standpoint, um, our design team is recommending we move forward with option one. Um, I also know that uh, um, that Turner Executive Director is here, along with their board members, if you'd like to hear from them at all, I don't know about that, President Schmitz.
And I, I'd just like to make one more comment about the pool, so um, with the pool, especially with the, the, the lane lines that we're, we're having, you know, we're looking at the future, potentially, if there is potential that there is gonna be a swim team, we'll be ready to handle that, looking in the future. So the current pool that we have won't accommodate that, the new pool that we are um, proposing will be able to handle that in the future.
Do you understand that the Red Cross regrets eight and a half feet diving lane? The new one is seven point two inches? And yet it's gonna be used for that?
Yes, it's not used for diving, it'll be used for competition swimming.
Right, and they know how to dive, now you're gonna have children, where are those children in order to dive?
Here's the deep end, there's a deep shallow, there's a deep end, deep well that they can learn how to dive.
The deep well is below the rock wall, that's what, ten by twelve? They're gonna learn to dive into that?
No, no, we're, we're not gonna be doing diving, there's other facilities for diving, they can do.
Where are your kids gonna learn to do or dive?
Mankato? But what, what, what they'll be doing here?
How old is the YMCA in Ulm, in Mankato?
I, I do not know.
Fifty years? No, it's a lot older than that. I, again, oh, shut up, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna just chime in a little bit here, as I serve on the renew committee, and with the current pool, and we looked at options, and when we started this, I'm gonna go back almost two years with Lisa, you know, we walked out of the one con- meeting and we were at about twenty-two million dollars, twenty-three million dollars, and you know, to build us a ten thousand square foot facility on the outside bump out was in that four to five million dollars. And with going through every project and trying to be cost-effective, and this is our lowest-cost option if we're gonna consider moving forward with having gymnastics within our community. I don't have that final number, it's either between five to eight hundred thousand projected to renovate that pool area. And moving forward, you know, the taxpayers voted, they wanted these projects within our community, now we're tasked to, to fund them, and then we're gonna have to sustain them within our community, and I don't know about all the locker room situations, but I'm hearing you there and I'm still concerned with that and members, because now we're gonna put additional fitness and now you're gonna have fitness center users probably using the locker rooms, and I know they're talking some cubicles out by the fitness areas also, but like I said, I just wanted to say that if the community wants the gymnastics, this is the option that best suits that at this point in time. You know, we can't build another square footage for that money to have that amenity in our community. And I would like to add one more thing, you know, it was, we had the renew meeting last week, you know, and I brought it up at a renew meeting, uh, you know, about having steps into a brand-new building, you know, and having our ADA compliant ramp on the outside. And it was gonna be, we had the wrong drawing given to us at the meeting last Wednesday, but now we still have the rendering showing two or three steps on the entryway. Before we would start construction, I would like us to think that we build a building, that we don't build steps into it, you know, with our aging population, and who's gonna get out there and shovel it at five o'clock in the morning and maintain those steps, but that's just my piece.
You're looking at a ramp again, getting in and out of the facility. If we're gonna have zero access to the pool, it only makes sense to have zero access to the pool.
I would agree.
So it's, yes, I agree with you.
There's, there's some details on here that I still think that need to be tweaked, but I'm gonna state that we need to go ahead and get some hard numbers, we need to come back and say, are we five hundred thousand on our budget, or are we a million? Or are we right on budget and can we tweak that a little bit and try to get that compromise?
Well, it's gonna depend on that final number to look at any of the smaller areas that we've discussed tonight to add or change or tweak, but we need to know what, know those numbers are before we can make those decisions, so.
You know, I mean, it all comes down to it that when we started this two years ago, we already knew we were out of money, I mean, literally, but at that time, we should've either cut a project and moved on, or we, we stuck it out and tried to get to concepts to try to accommodate everything within the community.
Nate, step up to the mic, please.
Julie Sandau, Newell, Minnesota. You talk about the diving, I have been there at Open Swim, so you can say that they can go to Mankato and learn how to swim or go someplace else to swim, the problem is, is that during Open Swim, you still need an area for those young little boys who want to get in there and dive, for them to go, without a whistle being blown at them all the time. And you talk about, you want the diving, you wanna, you're tweaking everything, so why can't you tweak that deep end? You know, down where you're, so there is an eight point five where they can dive. That can be all done by the diving boards, why not? So, and then the other thing is, how long are you gonna be closed? You're talking, what, how many ta- how, how long?
Uh, the estimate would be nine to twelve months.
So for a year? And you're saying that there's not gonna be any revenue, there's nobody that uses that pool that is worth having that open during that time? There's a lot of silver sneakers that come every day down there.
There's a hundred thousand dollars in savings per month to shorten the construction timeframe.
Okay, alright, I'm done.
And what would that timeline be, Tom, as far as, what do we, what are we kinda guestimating when they would start that project?
Timeline's in your packet, front page, um, if you authorize option one today, um, we would anticipate construction documents complete by the end of April, bidding phase complete by June second, construction uh, beginning mid-July, with a grand opening in August of next year, twenty twenty-one.
Another area that I, depending on where our dollars come in, that I've given some thought to, and I just kinda shake your head, but um, I just wanted to give some thought to our Herman Heights project, and I, the wall, I think we have to do, that's been on the agenda forever, but I think we would potentially have an option of, of taking a second look at that parking lot area. I know it's so much easier to do it all at once, we've talked about that, but to me, a parking lot is not something that, um, I just think there's a much more importance that are down at our Vogel Field House than there is for a parking lot that could be done five years from now. But I, so I just wanted to throw that out there, that that's something I think we need to consider, if we run into financial issues and we're trying to put this, piece this all together, um, if the bids come in higher, but it's just something that, when I was kinda weighing that last night, I was like, man, that could sit there and wait five more years, the price is gonna go up, I know, I know, I know, but I'd rather make sure we do this right and make sure this is right for our community. We know twenty years ago, they had to cut, 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 and they ended up with some problems by cutting it, which some of you have already mentioned tonight, so I, I, we have to try and do it and do it right. And I, you know, the first step is to get that, those bids and see what those final numbers are gonna look like.
I'm gonna just chime in a little less, when you say about not paving that parking lot, you have to remember, we have three houses up there that have a blacktop road right now, and if those people have to take a gravel road to their house, they might not like that, you know, just stating that when we realign Monument Road.
Well, I'm saying, we wouldn't, probably wouldn't have to realign that for five more years.
Or do the whole project, you're saying?
Just do the hill.
Just do the hill.
I'm just saying it's an option, that way I think we should think about, if we need to.
We will, we will be back here with the bids and a request to consider authorizing the, awarding the bids, you know, in May, May-June.
For this project?
Yes, for renew, uh, yeah, rec center.
We will have in March to bid for the.
Yes, we open the Herman bids Tuesday, the twenty-fifth of February.
I guess I agree, I'm sitting on this committee, I, I agree with that we do need to move forward with option one. I think we put a lot of time and effort into the design and, and coming up with what, you know, all the amenities that, that Tom spoke about and that people were looking forward to when we started this project. If we go out to bids, that doesn't mean that we're gonna have to decide how to fund it now, tonight.
No.
So, um, I do believe that we, we need to move forward with the bids and I would support that, and then decide where that funds comes from.
I agree with Counselor Fisher, we just proceed with items A and C, we don't have to make that decision tonight. We're gonna get lucky, it's gonna come in at ten point five.
It's happened, it could happen. I'll see if there's any more public just.
Anybody else have anything?
Anybody else wanna talk? That was your chance.
Name and address for the record, please.
Andrea Betker, Turner Hall.
Dan Schwartz, uh, New Ulm resident, uh, director of Turner Hall. Just, uh, our president, Matt Berger couldn't be here tonight, and he did have a letter addressed to the council, and I think everyone received it, but I didn't know if I wanted to submit it for the record, if it was more appropriate to read it into the record, or...
If you have it, go ahead and read it in.
Read it in?
Read it in.
Uh, dear mayor and city council, I write on behalf of Turner Gymnastics Academy regarding the Recreation Center Renew project that is coming before you at tonight's meeting. As all of you are aware, the residents of New Ulm approved the construction of a new gymnastics facility at the New Ulm Recreation Center in two thousand sixteen as part of the local option sales tax renew. For those who are not familiar with our organization, Turner Hall Gymnastics and New Ulm Area Gymnastics Acad- Academy combined our youth gymnastics program in the fall of two thousand nineteen in anticipation of the new gymnastics facility. Turner Gymnastics Academy offers a wide range of gymnastics programs for children from ages eighteen months through eighteen years, including everything from recreational classes focused on gross motor development for younger children, through competitive teams that perform advanced gymnastic skills and feed our successful high school gymnastics program. We currently have more than five hundred separate children enrolled in our various programs. We are proud of our comprehensive gymnastics program and the unique recreational option that it provides to all New Ulm children and families, regardless of gender or socioeconomic status. Since the renewed projects were approved, we have worked closely and cooperatively with city staff and the renew oversight committee on the design and potential lease terms for the new gymnastics facility. Countless hours were invested during that time, both by the city and our organization, to develop this project and the gymnastics programs, made several concessions from the original plans for the greater good of the Recreation Center. For example, while the original plans presented to the New Ulm voters called for the construction of a new gymnastics facility at the Recreation Center with approximately fifteen thousand square feet of floor space, we agreed to reduce the space to approximately eleven thousand square feet of floor space in order to allow the city to move the gymnastics facility to the existing pool area. we agreed to reduce the space to approximately eleven thousand square feet of floor space in order to allow the city to move the gymnastics facility to the existing pool area. While these changes were difficult, we were confident that the new facility could still adequately meet the needs of our students, gymnasts, and staff, and the overall changes were in the best interest of New Ulm residents. Unfortunately, we learned last week that the construction estimates for the Recreation Center project had come in significantly over budget, even after the substantial concessions that we made earlier in the design process. We also learned that the city staff would be presenting you with two new design options for the Recreation Center Renew project. Design Option One, which would change the construction cost estimate for the Recreation Center Renew project to eleven point three four five million, and would require additional funding, and Design Option Two, which will reduce the construction cost estimate for the project to nine point nine million and would result in substantial cuts to the project. We are continuing to analyze the full impacts of these proposals, and will need to present any final proposal to our board for final action. Nonetheless, I recognize the need for prompt action by the city, and therefore offer the following preliminary thoughts on these issues. Design Option One would meet our needs and would allow us to safely operate our gymnastics program and effectively host gymnastics competitions at the new gymnastics facility. I understand there is some uncertainty about storage at the facility that will be refined during future stages of the project, but we are confident that we can work with the city staff to address any of these issues. We therefore support moving forward with Option One. On the other hand, Design Option Two would eliminate one thousand square feet of the floor space and the toddler multipurpose administrative space from the gymnastics facility. Quite simply, we do not believe that this space would be adequate to safely operate our gymnastics programs or host competitions. Accordingly, we do not believe this option is viable for the Gymnastics Center and do not support moving forward with Option Two. We understand the challenges inherent in coordinating these types of projects and appreciate the time and effort the city has dedicated to this project. On behalf of Turner Gymnastics Academy, I hope that this council will proceed with Design Option One, which will allow New Ulm's gymnastics program to continue to thrive into the future and provide unique recreational opportunities for all of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or anything, or?
I guess the only question I got is, is all the paperwork in line for getting agreement and stuff for the gymnastics for Turner, you know, for the Rec Center contract?
We're still going through that process, but, um, you know, if we move forward with Option One, that will kind of help move that, move that forward, um, with that option space. If we would gone with Option Two, we're eliminating more space, um, from that area, it might have been a little more difficult, and we might have had to go back to the drawing board and possibly take gymnastics out, as that space might not have been viable. So that, again, would delay the process, and I think moving forward with Option One, um, as presented, you know, in the presentation, um, I think moves us forward in the right direction, um, in getting that consummated, uh, as a lease agreement.
So, may I, Chris, would we get this information to the council in time, by the time the bids are
Yeah.
arranged, so that we have a, an outline, and then they know what they'd be up against for paying rents and what our expectations are?
Yes, we can, we can work on that.
President Schmitz and counselors, we already have a draft agreement with Turner Gymnastics Academy as a leasing that has been verbally agreed to, so that is drafted, um, and would need final uh, approval by the city attorney and the city council and the Turner Board. Um, but I'll, the heavy lifting has been done and is, is ready to move forward with an agreement, um, if you choose option, Option One tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, I wanna go back just a little bit, and I don't wanna go spend too much time on this, but I know there's a lot of frustration from people that are closing this down for, for nine months to a year, can you talk about what, um, uh, what we're doing about that, or what are we doing to help folks that are our daily swimmers and, uh, what, what options? I know you, it's covered real briefly, but can you talk about that a little bit more?
Uh, yes, certainly, President Schmitz and counselors. Um, just a portion of the Recreation Center, I call it the south half of the campus, is slated to be closed, the pool, um, the locker rooms, showers, um, and of course, the, uh, the Herbeck, multi, the existing Herbeck multipurpose room. So the only amenities that won't be allowed will be the pool, the locker room, and showers. Fitness, fieldhouse, racquetball, spin classes, all that will continue to be offered um, either at, uh, the Recreation Center or some of our other facilities, including the Community Center and Civic Center, or both. Um, so it's really just the pool, um, showers and locker rooms.
So is there any intention then to work, potentially, and others talk about, we have a pool at the Best Western and the Microtel, and is there any talk about trying to work with them for during the day options?
Yes, we've already opened up those lines of communication with both of our, uh, New Ulm area hotels that have pools, and we will be further researching opportunities for both indoor and outdoor aquatics during the construction timeframe, and brokering, uh, are hoping to broker, planning to broker agreements between, uh, New Ulm Aquatic Users and other facilities. And, again, as, as memberships go, you know, we will be, uh, extending memberships, we will be, um, you know, cutting their membership in half, so to speak, because if they use the whole building now and can't use the pool in the future, we will be cutting that cost or extending their memberships. And/or, uh, re, fully refunding them, their memberships if they wanna refund. Um, and then encourage them to come back in, um, August of twenty twenty-one. Any other questions about that?
I know Cheryl wants to add anything to that, or? Well, I think it's a really exciting time when you think about it, and we talked about some, um, rough patches to get through this next year, but think about what we're gonna have in another year. And having that gymnastics facility in our community for kids that haven't been able to be involved, um, and be able to do more, I, my understanding is they can do more things because they have the larger space and the more depth. Having this water park that seventy-plus percent of our community said, we want this water park, and we're now gonna finally be able to have that, and we know what our Minnesota winters are like, when there's not a lot to do with blowing wind and having the indoor gymnasium, uh, gymnastics center for our kids and grandkids. What a, what a wonderful opportunity and growth for our community, and, and it sounds like we're supporting, um, Option One, so I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve up, um, the Design Option One and authorize construction documents to be prepared by J. L. G., and authorize the competitive bidding process to begin immediately upon completion of the construction documents.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
President Schmitz and counselors, um, reminding that Option One includes an adjustment to the construction budget of, um, nine point five
Oh.
to the recommended eleven point five million, as in depicted in Proposed Action B.
Do we have to pick that number yet, because what if this number comes in higher? Then we have to go back and amend our motion?
But it was eleven point seven.
We will be designing and, and bidding to, uh, no more than eleven point five. We will open those bids and bring them to you in May, um, or June for your final decision on, um, on a designed project that was designed, um, to be no more than eleven point five in construction costs.
Yeah, so it's, it's just clarifying the original amount that we had, um, you know, allowing us to proceed with the eleven point five million dollar construction, uh, because that's the current, um, that's the current estimate that's out there.
Okay.
It's the two million above.
I'll include by item B then in my motion as well, then.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I, item B is written, says you're authorizing additional funding. And no one has identified the source for the funding. If in fact you were gonna do that, I think for purposes of the motion, you'd need to be specific.
I, I agree that we can move forward at this full steam ahead options A and option C. We don't have to authorize the additional funding.
Correct, because we haven't.
We can reject that bid when it comes in at eleven seven.
But the bidders have to know how much they can go up to.
No, no.
No, no, they have a, they have a.
No, I mean, the maximum amount we're gonna spend.
No, the bidder has to build us to suit the spec that we're looking for, for the square footage and everything for holding the amenities, that's why I kinda questioned that beat.
Yeah, holding back the budget's a smart thing for us to do.
You know, otherwise you give them an open, they're gonna just.
They're gonna run it right up to that number, yeah. Alright, let's leave it just with A and C then. Scratch that off.
Second again, if it needs to be.
President, maybe you could just authorize a target project amount, but not just leave the funding alone, I guess. That's kinda what Tom's looking for, I believe, is this is where you want the design cost to come in.
Well, we have a design, don't we?
Yes, yes, we do.
And we, we're, it's being proposed at eleven point five million.
Correct.
Alls we need to do is approve going out with the concept that we have and get it over with.
If that's the understanding of the council, yes.
You see a concern at all?
No, no, I think we'll, if, we, support Option One would be wonderful.
Okay.
Any more discussion? See a nun? Own favor, say aye.
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 Pos, no? Motion carries, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks for coming, everybody that came for this portion. But we're not done yet.
We got a ways to go.
We got a few more, we got a few more things.
Now they're all.
Item six point one, first consideration of ordinance number twenty point zero three six. Let's see, we got that down for here. Mr. Snowbaker, did anything need to be done on this one, that's just, uh, what he mentioned before about?
Yeah, it's just, uh, the first consideration, uh, of the ordinance, and you had just heard that previously, and item, uh, four point three.
Right, so just need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second, second.
We got a motion and a second, any more discussion? See a nun? Own favor, say aye.
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 Pos, no? Motion carries, item six point two is done. Item six point two, or six point three, set a public hearing date for, uh, two thousand twenty street and alley improvement, group one project, and that's for Tuesday, March seventeenth, two thousand twenty, at four thirty P. M.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? See a nun? Own favor, say aye.
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 Pos, no? Motion carries, item six point four, receive vacation petition for the public hearing date for March third, two thousand twenty, at four thirty P. M.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? See a nun? Own favor, say aye.
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 Pos, no? Motion carries, item six point five, receive vacation petition for a public hearing date for March third, two thousand twenty, four thirty P. M. Am I reading the same one? Nope.
Nope.
Different one, okay.
Monument Street.
Motion to approve for the two hundred sixty-one feet of Monument Street, set the public hearing date for Tuesday, March third, twenty twenty, at four thirty P. M.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? See a nun? Own favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, no? Motion carries, item six point six, temporary residential only parking at twenty-seven North Front Street.
So.
Mr. Chris?
Yes, this item was brought to our attention by Counselor Christian. Uh, there is one resident across the street, uh, located at twenty-seven North Front Street from Furmanich that is having issues with parking, uh, in front of their, in front of their residence, uh, on the railroad tracks, blocking the pedestrian ramps in front of the the fire hydrant as well, so, uh, we're looking, uh, for you to approve, um, temporary resident-only parking along Front Street, so the front of their house. And then another item that was brought up, and you have a, a picture in front of you that I handed out, um, also authorizing to put no parking, um, from the railroad track up fifty feet going towards Front Street, uh, because that's what's in our code, um, as no parking allowed within that distance. We did talk to Furmanich today, went through their construction meeting, uh, and talked to the, um, construction reps, uh, and they did pass out, um, a flyer to all the construction people, showing them where they couldn't, couldn't, could and couldn't park, and this area fell within that, so we are thinking it's more, um, workers at Furmanich that are doing that, so then we stopped by, um, the plant office and talked to the manager there. Um, he was very receptive to the idea, we told him what the plan was. His only, um, condition that he had asked of us is that, um, we give him until Monday before we really start enforcing a lot of the no parking, uh, in that area, so he can get the email out and the photos out, the pictures out to his workers, so they know. Um, and I told him the only thing that we would be enforcing, um, probably starting Wednesday or Thursday, is if someone is literally parking on the railroad tracks, as in the pictures that, that you saw, but give them Monday for the, the no parking, um, so they can get the word out.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Again, just to comment that I had brought it forward, I, I was hoping that the individual homeowner would be here today, he said he was going to be, but he wasn't. I mean, I can't believe the photograph you have in front of you, 'cause every morning when I go by, it's packed with vehicles.
And afternoon.
And afternoon. And I'm just hoping we can push this through, and eventually when the construction project is done, Furmanich does open up the parking lot where the construction is all taking place right now, that's where the vehicles are, but the problem goes away.
So, but what's in front of us is just authorize this residential parking, do they want just one spot, I'm assuming?
So it, we, when we looked at it, it will be two parking spots that are directly in front of their house on Front Street, um, dedicated to the residential only, and then, um, it would be the other no parking to alleviate some of the, uh, issues being on the train track.
But that's not part of our agenda, but you can authorize that as a city manager, I believe.
Okay, would I be?
Right.
Uh, Mr. President, uh, no parking requires a city council resolution. Technically, it's a state statute that you can't park within fifty miles of the rail and twenty, or.
Fifty feet.
Fifty, fifty miles, close enough. Or twenty feet of the crosswalk, so basically it's no parking can be enforced right now.
Yes.
Right, right.
So, I guess you, I, I think I agree with Counselor Schultz, you'd have to bring back an agenda item. Uh, since it's not on the agenda to establish the no parking, but technically it already is no parking.
It's just enforcing it.
Yeah, you start, they start writing a few tickets, it'll be well-known.
Yeah, I can understand that construction workers wanna park quick and get to work and.
I'm gonna authorize the current, um, request for two parking spots at twenty-seven North Front Street.
And it, and that's.
In that area.
And that's just temporary parking for how long?
Uh, during the construction, so when the construction stops, that'll go back to normal.
Yeah, I'll add that to the motion.
Resolution.
And it, and we.
Should be a resolution.
Right, and that has to come back to us, right? We can't act on it now?
You're acting on the temporary parking right now.
Okay. Second.
It's a resolution.
Resolution, it does say here.
I'll offer that resolution then.
Second.
We got a motion and a second, offer a resolution, wait reading, any more discussion? See a nun? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six point seven, purchase of two thousand twenty Jeep Cherokee.
Motion to approve the purchase of a two thousand twenty Jeep Cherokee Latitude from Mayday Motors, the lowest bidder, in the amount of twenty-three thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? See a nun? Up, go ahead.
I've got a question for Chris, which vehicle is this replacing, or what department gets this vehicle?
This is, uh, street department, and which vehicle is it replacing?
It's engineering.
Oh, engineering, okay.
Joel Stedham, no. Anyway, own favor, say aye.
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 Pos, no? Motion carries. Item six point eight, uh, New Ulm Fire Department donations.
I will offer the resolution, wait the reading, to accept a donation of fifty-eight dollars and twenty cents from Cyber Grants, which is a three M donation dis, dis, distribution for contributions from Raleigh to Shane.
Second. We got a motion and a second, offer the resolution, wait reading, any more discussion? See a nun? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item six point nine, participate in the gold blue for, correct, okay, can't even say it, Cancer Awareness Month.
Yes, um, so this item, uh, was last approved, uh, back in two thou, two thousand seventeen. Uh, we, at that point, we did the four welcome signs, City Hall, Gertie the Goose, Goostown Fire Station, and, uh, a resident of the community, uh, helped light up the Defender Monument. Uh, this year, uh, Sarah is only asking to light up, uh, the Herman Monument, uh, so what we would do uh, is just put blue film on the ground lighting that's there to, to light the monument blue, and that would be on March ninth, uh, twenty twenty.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
Are we responsible for putting the blue? Are we responsible for putting the blue film on or?
Yeah, Parks and Rec will put the blue film on there. Um, prior to that, I think Elle Wood put, uh, helped with some of the signs, doing City Hall and things like that.
So that's something we have to purchase.
Um, I think we do have a little bit of blue film left over, but it's a very minor, minor cost.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Entertainer motion?
I'll offer a motion to participate in the cancer awareness month to go blue as part of Minnesota Cancer Alliance, Colon Cancer Network by illuminating Herman Heights Monument with blue light, lighting on Monday, March ninth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? Own favor say aye.
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 Posse no, motion carries. Item six point ten, control program summary.
So the deer hunt this year went really well. We had a record number, uh, of deer harvested, uh, this year, uh, with a total of seventy-five. There was a total of five hundred seventy-eight sightings. Uh, total hunting hours was about, oh, almost two thousand hours and the season length this year was eighty-one days uh, with fifty-six permit, uh, permits issued to, to hunters. So, uh, the program, uh, really did well this year, uh, with the number of deer harvested.
Thank you.
Mr. President, um, excuse me, um, I did talk, you know, we really, we do okay with our deer hunt. We never seem to get ahead. If you talk with anybody that lives up on the hill area, that, it is, there's still a lot of deer, um, concerns about disease. We never get ahead. We're always basically staying the same and if you look at our chart, it's been the same for ten years. Um, there was a recent article that talked about one city who changed their mind and what they decided to do was an unlimited deer hunt during the deer hunt. And you could take as many as you wanted. And so I did talk with, uh, Police Investigator Honsy about that option and, and it takes D N R approval, of course. And so he was going to kind of check into that to see if that could be an option for this coming year. You know, in the past, this council talked about, you know, getting serious with a sharpshooter and, and bringing that deer population down to a reasonable manageable level because we're not, we're really basically staying the same and if we're fine with staying the same, we can keep doing it. If we really want to get that population down where we don't have concerns as much as we still do, this might be another option for one year. Uh, I also talked with, my understanding is in the past, there were concerns about people with a license that lived out of town and since we only allow so many licenses, if they live out of town, they usually only hunt on the weekend or only hunt for a few days versus the people that are local or live closer who could hunt more often and obviously potentially take out more deer. Officer Honsy said that really hasn't been an issue much in the last few years where it used to be a bigger issue, so he didn't see that as a concern. So he was going to try and work on what that unlimited option would be or a larger option of taking more doe or, or bucks out. If that would be enticing to some of the deer hunters and maybe there could be something worked out with a food shelf gets a portion or, you know, I just think that there's some options here we can take a look at for this coming year. So, uh, just wanted to kind of update councilors on that issue. So with that, I'll accept the two thousand nineteen summary and reauthorize the two thousand twenty special archery deer hunt control program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? Own favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posse no, motion carries. Items six point eleven, city manager's performance evaluation process.
Just going to wake this whole time?
Last but not least, Shauna Boongarden, H R Director. So, um, uh, President and councilors, the evaluation process was discussed at the January twenty-first, um, work session meeting. It was decided to move forward utilizing Survey Monkey and to have the city attorney's office compile the results. Um, I've completed designing the survey in Survey Monkey with a new administration account that I only have access to. Um, when an employer counselor submits the results, they are collected within that Survey Monkey account that I only have access to. So I can either compile all the results and submit them to the city attorney's office and he will present during closed session meeting or we can utilize the paper evaluation form and then submit, um, have those submitted directly to the city's, or city attorney's office to compile the results and present in closed session. So that's, um, part of the reason why I brought it back.
And I think we talked about that on the Survey Monkey. You don't know who's saying what.
Unless there, there's an option to put their name down. If they put their name down, I would, I would know. Um, but I would give the results to the city attorney's office so that they can present to you in closed session. I wouldn't be there. Um, but I only have access to the account. No one else would be able to see the results.
And then I, I'm fine with Shauna collecting those results, um, you know, because usually it's handed, handled by the city attorney's office, but I'm okay with her collecting it because she's the only one that has access to the account.
Mr. President, I think the reason why this is on the agenda is that when it came up at the last meeting, the understanding was that our office would be getting the results directly. And I think when Shauna checked into how the program would actually work, it would be something that she would probably have to be controlling. And I think she had made a comment, she didn't really want to do that. And I, when she alerted me to the fact that these changes happened, I said, well, I don't think that's the way the council approved it, so just to make sure it's okay, bring it back and see how you want to handle it.
Yeah, that, yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and also what you said, the people are more will, more likely to fill out an, um, a computer-based program versus a handwritten document.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
It's easier.
So we get better results.
It is quicker.
Yep.
It's a no-brainer.
Yep.
And I have it all prepared. It's ready to go. It'll be sent out if you offer, authorize it that way by the end of the week.
I'm going to authorize Option One there.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none? Own favor say aye.
Aye.
Posse no, motion carries. Thank you. Item seven point one, reports claims paid, accept list of claims paid in amount of four million, five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, twenty-one dollars and eighty cents and approve a list of claims to be paid in amount of one hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-seven cents.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? See none? Own favor say aye.
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 Posse no, motion carries. With no more business, meeting adjourned.
I'm, I'm not even hungry yet. I'm not even hungry yet. Let's keep going.